Good evening. Thank you for those that have attended in person this evening and thanks for all of you who have joined the call virtually. I think we're all really excited about the opportunity to begin a dialogue that I believe is long overdue, that really talks about the ability to partner with our community to be able to address the issues around the surrounding trauma, reducing stigma around mental illness, figuring out ways that we can develop education tools and resources and making sure that no matter what resources we have, if they're not connecting with the people that need help, we need to figure out a way how we alleviate those barriers. But make no mistake, we're in a time where we have a mental health system that's crumbling and we have a need for services that are at an all-time high. Post pandemic, I would say this is the second wave of the pandemic and we've seen it through hospital admissions, increased participation in crisis, and the waiting lists that exist throughout all of Dolphin County service levels. So the answers and the solutions are not easy, but I believe, just like in every other case, you don't look to just one person or to government to be able to provide the solution. And quite frankly, we as government need to do a better job of being clear to say, you know, the smartest people I know know we have a lot to learn. And being able to have a partnership with the community to be able to help educate, to be able to provide support to families who are struggling with individuals in their family who have mental illness, to figure out a way to reduce the terrible stigma around trying to figure out a way to access and to be able to ask for help and to figure out a way to ensure that those people who are struggling, we're not standing here pointing fingers at, but we're figuring out a way to direct them to the right resources and providing a level of support. My dad told me at an early age, you shouldn't ask for help. And the older I get, the more I realize that's probably the farthest thing from the truth. Those individuals who show real courage are ones who are able to actually understand that they can expose themselves a little bit to be able to change a life and future lives as a result of being able to seek out that they need. And that, in my opinion, shows real strength and not weakness. And today, hopefully, we're going to be able to provide an opportunity to begin a dialogue which we will believe is the first in a series of community dialogues that's going to enable us to really do a better job of communicating, allowing the community to help direct future interactions and topics, and to figure out a way, not the government tells you what you need, but we can have a two-way dialogue to talk about what is needed in the community, what are the barriers you face, and how can we use our limited resources in the way that will provide the most and easiest access and help in the way that folks need it at the time that they need it. So tonight is an exciting opportunity to begin that dialogue. And we've asked staff, which I'm grateful that we have an incredible staff here in Dolphin County that has taken up the mantle and was willing to pull together this first initial event. And tonight, our moderator is going to be Ms. Andrea Kepler, who is our Director of Mental Health Autism and Developmental Programs for Dolphin County. We are in the time and an era where we have now technology. I don't think we ever had these screens before or the ability to communicate through virtual means prior to the pandemic. So there are some relatively good ways to connect differently post pandemic. And we're going to have presenters tonight virtually, and we're going to have some presenters here tonight in person. So without further ado, I'm going to step to the side and turn the mic over to Ms. Andrea Kepler, who's going to moderate tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you all for being here, and most especially, thank you for your time. As your moderator, I will introduce each speaker, and at the conclusion of the third speaker, we will address any questions that come up. For those of you participating virtually, if you just raise your hand, that will suffice and we will go to your question. So, thank you. Our first speaker is Amanda Jernigan. Amanda is a licensed clinical social worker and the corporate outpatient director at Cadenzia. Ms. Jernigan has worked in a variety of settings since 1999, including children and youth, inpatient psychiatric facilities, and drug and alcohol, and has also been an adjunct professor at Penn State Harrisburg since 2013. Ms. Jernigan, are you online?
I am. I'm here.
Thank you for being here.
Thanks for having me.
What is trauma and the various forms in which any of us may experience it, as well as how might we recognize the signs and symptoms of trauma?
Absolutely. So, trauma as defined by SAMSA is the result of an event, a series of events, or a set of circumstances that is experienced by an individual as being physically or emotionally harmful, of life-threatening, that they feel may be life-threatening, and that has lasting adverse effects on the individual's functioning, mental, physical, social, emotional, and spiritual well-being. And we're going to talk more about that in our brief time together this evening. So, there's many different types of trauma, and I'm just going to hit on some of the most major ones. A lot of times when we talk about trauma, people think they have to be these horrifically large events, and I'm dating myself by saying things like September 11th, the Challenger explosion. But in reality, there's so many different types of trauma. This can be in the form of victim or being a witness in a domestic violence incident, to being in a serious accident or suffering from a serious illness such as cancer or a car accident. It could be historical trauma. Something could happen today that triggers past trauma for someone. Natural and man-made disasters. So this could include things like floods, tornadoes, fires. The victim or witness to community violence, that could be seeing a fight on the street, things of that nature. School violence, let's not forget kids and what we see and hear on TV as occurring in schools. So this could be being in a fight at school, witnessing a fight at school. Bullying, this is a big one. We talk about bullying, this is in person, but we also forget about social bullying and online bullying in various ways. Forced displacement, so if you lived in an unsafe house and you were evacuated, if there was a fire and you had to move quickly. Traumatic grief and separation, military trauma, war, terrorism, or political violence, sexual assaults and abuse, physical abuse and physical assaults, being emotionally abused, and system-induced trauma or re-traumatization. And this is really the media, the news, the stories we see on television. One of the main things we say when we treat individuals suffering from trauma is, the first thing is control the trauma inputs that you have, and that's turning off the news, not watching things like that. But with signs and symptoms, you can't really stereotype it, although it's often done. There's some hallmark signs such as nightmares, or sleep, anger, numbness or sadness, but we're going to look at these a little more in depth. So cognitively, trauma can affect the way our brains operate. We might have problems remembering details of the event. We might be disoriented to surroundings right after an event. If there's a trauma, we might just be confused, not understanding what's going on. We have problems concentrating. It's not easy for people who just went through trauma or recently experienced trauma to make decisions. There may be guilt associated with trauma. You may become obsessive about the event, thinking about it all the time. It just keeps getting stuck in your head and replaying. Sometimes it's suicidal or homicidal thoughts, depending on the trauma. It can affect us emotionally, which are our feelings, leading us to feel anxious, feeling angry, being irritable, feeling feelings of intense sadness. Maybe we're feeling panicky, like somebody's out to get us, watching over our shoulder. That feeling of like always being on guard. Sometimes it's a very depressed mood. We don't feel like getting up in the morning, or getting dressed, or showering, or eating. Fear, fear that it's going to happen again. Fear of, you know, retribution, depending on what type of incident it was. That grief, especially if we lose somebody or somebody's life is lost. Some people turn to eating excessively when they are stressed after a trauma. Sometimes people turn to drugs and alcohol as a way to mask the pain. People get what's called a hyper startle response, where they get very scared easily. So like, if it was something where somebody heard a gunshot and a balloon pop, that could cause you to have that startle response of a gunshot when it's actually a balloon. Sleep gets disturbed. We don't sleep well, or if we do fall asleep, we have problems staying asleep. We get up several times throughout the night. You might have intense crying spells. You start crying for no reason. You cry uncontrollably several times a day. There's signs of physical distress with trauma, and things that we notice in our bodies. And one of the biggest ones is your heart rate increases. You feel that redness flush into your face. You might have headaches that last for periods of time or days. Muscle spasms, dry mouth, sweating excessively, vague body aches and pains, and that might be accompanied too with nausea or vomiting. We also sometimes have spiritual symptoms that after trauma, where we get angry at our God. We're like, why did this happen? We may lose our sense of purpose. We may start to doubt the existence of our God. We may start to withdraw from our faith community. And sometimes people experience hallucinations of religious or spiritual in nature as well. Some of these reactions are very natural reactions that your body would go through in the response to a traumatic event. But from a clinical perspective, we look at these from the length of time they've been going on, the intensity of the symptoms, and how that affects you to make a diagnosis. But remember, you're the expert on yourselves, and you know how you are better than anyone else. So if you don't feel like yourself, you should make an appointment to be seen. You don't have to be suffering in silence. That's what I have for my section.
Okay. Thank you so much. Will you be staying with us in case there's some questions?
I will be here. I can't get away quickly, so I will be here.
Thank you. Is Dr. Yinger with us?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. Dr. Ashley Yinger is the Criminal Justice Programming Administrator at the Dolphin County District Attorney's Office. Within that role, she serves as the Stepping Up Coordinator, which is a national initiative to reduce people with serious mental illness in prisons and jails. Dr. Yinger has worked on several initiatives within the criminal justice system, including crisis intervention team training for law enforcement and the co-responder program model, working side by side with law enforcement. Dr. Yinger has a PhD in criminal justice with a focus on justice administration. Dr. Yinger has over 14 years of experience in human services. She served as interim MHADP Administrator in Dolphin County, and is the former Mental Health Intellectual Disabilities Early Intervention Administrator of Franklin Fulton Counties. She is also an adjunct professor for Penn State Mont Alto and Chippensburg University in their Criminal Justice Department. Dr. Yinger, Dolphin County is proud of its commitment to promoting trauma-informed practices. Please share with us what initiatives are continuing with area police and within the criminal justice system that promote an awareness of trauma.
Thanks, Andrea. As you mentioned in my introduction, you hit on some of those that I'll go into just a little bit deeper with our few minutes here together. So, looking at the criminal justice response to, you know, trauma-informed, we have taken a couple instances, one of which Andrea highlighted is the Crisis Intervention Team Training. It is known as CIT Training. It's a national initiative, and it started many years ago. Dolphin County was able to start this initiative in the fall of 2019. Since then, we actually have close to 300 trained officers in this model. We're actually having a training going on this week. The focus of that training, it's a 40-hour basic training, and what that entails is it's meant for first responders. For Dolphin County, we've taken the initiative to really focus in on law enforcement, which includes our police officers, along with corrections. That includes correction officers and probation officers. But then we have also looked into other various staff through the criminal justice system, but to also include the human services system. But during this 40-hour training, it really starts off on understanding mental health, what does those diagnoses are in mental health, what signs and symptoms, behaviors may be associated with certain diagnoses, looking at, you know, recovery stories from individuals that have, you know, experienced such symptoms and behaviors and services that they, you know, have been available to them and beneficial. Looking at substance use and how that can also impact various dynamics of signs and symptoms and behaviors associated with individuals that may have autism or intellectual developmental disabilities. Learning various services in the community in relation to working with a variety of people from different cultural backgrounds, looking at, you know, various resources that includes such as, I'll use some examples, homelessness, older adults. There's even a section that focuses in on youth and how various signs and symptoms with mental health and substance use may look different with youth compared to adults, similarities as well. And then a trauma section of understanding trauma. So officers that go through the CIT training, they learn what ACE means, the Adverse Childhood Experiences, and how having a particular ACE score could impact an individual from a mental health down to even a physical health standpoint. And really understanding, I always like to use the phrase in the training, it's not so much, you know, why are you doing what you're doing, but what has happened throughout your life that may be contributing factors to such behaviors. And then throughout the training, they really learn about de-escalation. So officer does encounter somebody that is in crisis. Maybe they're responding to a trauma event or something going on in their life, and they are in crisis in that moment. What some tools and skills that the officers may use from a de-escalation standpoint, and then in addition, what are the next steps from that? Maybe they help de-escalate in that moment, but helping that individual with the next steps that's getting connected to services. So learning about those variety of resources throughout the week. And I know our next panelists will also be talking about the resources in which officers learn about. So that is one of our biggest initiatives that we're doing with criminal justice practitioners right now with the CIT training. And as I mentioned, tomorrow's our graduation date, and after that graduation, we will be close to 300. Our next scheduled training for this year will be in November. And so once we complete the November training, we should have a little bit over 300 trained in that. We've definitely seen some very positive outcomes from that. The officers take a pre and post test through the training, and it really has shown good positive outcomes from, you know, increasing awareness and knowledge, understanding some additional de-escalation skills that they may also learn in addition to prior experience that they've had prior to taking this class. And then as I mentioned, you know, it kind of goes beyond just that de-escalation and the training, is what are the next steps in being able to work together as a system and as a community to be able to help individuals out. Say, you know, individuals do have an encounter with law enforcement, and maybe there's a CIT officer available or not available. We do have eight coresponders that are in the county. They do work in the District Attorney's Office, but they're embedded with eight police departments in the county. So they go every day with police officers. Majority of the day, I would say, is in the car with the officers. If not, they may be in the departments doing follow-up calls. But these are trained mental health, social work professionals that can work with the officers and the individuals when a crisis arises, and somebody's experiencing, you know, needing some additional support, some services that are in the community that may not even necessarily be mental health. Maybe it's housing resources or food. The coresponders will work with the human service entities to be able to connect that individual with the services if their first encounter is with law enforcement. So there's some definitely initiatives that we have taken from the criminal justice side. There's also a trauma-informed session that also dives a little bit deeper. With CIT, we just do one hour that touches based on some trauma-informed. It's in the works right now. It's kind of been put on hold from the pandemic. So now, the group that has been trained is getting back together to be able to do a longer training to look at, you know, how does trauma impact an individual early on in life to even later in life from a mental health and physical health component, and being able to, you know, access those services and resources out there. So, like I said, with close to 300 trained in the CIT training, and in addition to the coresponders, they're just some of the initiatives that we've taken from the criminal justice. And of course, all of that entails partnering with the human services entities throughout the county. Like I said, we've seen very good progress with that and outcomes with all those initiatives. And then, again, you know, working later, and we have other initiatives, but I would like to say that they're the kind of the front-end community initiatives that entails being able to work together. Andrea, hopefully that answered your question. Let me know if you want me to, you know, go into anything further.
One of the statistics that I, one of the statistics that I believe is extraordinarily telling is that, look at 2021 related to the interactions of law enforcement with the coresponders and individuals who were called out related to serious mental illness calls. How many interactions did they have? And then ultimately, how many of those resulted in arrests? Which I know is a statistic that really talks about the level of effectiveness of the work. And then, at some point, if you could touch on how we've reduced, and we've been successful in trying to reduce those individuals with serious mental illness also in our county jail.
Yes, I can speak to that, Commissioner. So just looking roughly, about each month, and this can vary, but about each month across the eight police departments that the coresponders are embedded in, we see about roughly 200 referrals where the police have engaged a coresponder either on scene or after, maybe they weren't available, and the police officer has asked the coresponder to follow up after. So it's roughly about 200 referrals that they get across each month. Again, give or take some months, maybe a little bit higher. So when we looked at the year of 2021, we saw just shy of 2,000 referrals. And then when you looked at across all those 2,000 referrals and being able to engage the person in additional services and resources, less than 10% of those actually result in arrests. So working hand in hand with a CIT-trained officer and a coresponder, they're really being able to help individuals that are in crisis to be able to de-escalate them on scene, and then provide them with additional support and services that is not resulting in arrests. For this year itself, in 2022, we are actually almost going to hit over that 2,000. So it's definitely kicked off to a busy year. But they are, even with this year, looking at those statistics, it still falls in line to be in less than 10%. Usually what we see is actually about 6% to 7% of them result in charges when they're connected to those officers and the coresponders. Looking further in, you know, for whatever, for various reasons, if an individual does need to go through the criminal justice system, some of our other initiatives that Commissioner asked about, you know, trying to reduce them being that time spent in jail, we have taken a variety of initiatives at the booking center to be able to screen individuals, to be able to try to get them connected to services at the front end if need and be. And then looking at case planning mechanisms, we have a team of individuals that's across criminal justice and human service entities, where we meet every week to case plan for individuals that may have some identifying treatment needs, whether that be from past trauma or various degrees of diagnoses across mental health and substance use, and being able to connect them to the treatment needs that they would need to be able to increase their stability when they are out in the community. And doing those initiatives that we have, such as called Team NISA, Mental Illness Substance Abuse Team, what we have found is individuals that do have that serious mental illness in our Dolphin County prison, they're staying much less than what they were a couple years ago, and they're getting out in the community and getting connected to, you know, the appropriate services and supports. And we're also seeing there was civism lower in connection to that. Hopefully that answered your question, Commissioner. Would you like me to highlight anything further?
That was great. I just also accepted an award nationally for the work that's been done. When we talk about diversion and intercepts, really taking a look at all of those intercepts. And one of the key ones is interaction with law enforcement and sort of the behavior that gets people in the front door of the system. And I think we've been recognized as one of the model counties in the entire country as it relates to what we're doing on the front end. And that's all due to the staff that we've got in human services and to the work of the DA, Dr. Yinger, and our police department. So I just want to commend you for that good work and the outcomes. I thought the statistics would really put a sort of a show that that diversion is absolutely working and the number of interactions we've had. So, thank you.
You'll be able to hang around for questions, right?
Yes, yep, I will be.
Okay, thank you. Our third and final speaker is David DeSanto, who is the Director of Dolphin County Crisis Intervention Services. Mr. DeSanto has worked in mental health for 25 years and has been on the Crisis Intervention Team for 20. He leads the county response for behavioral health emergencies, which includes the coordination of behavioral health response to local disaster crises. Mr. DeSanto, would you please share what these and other services are for community traumatic events, and how groups or individuals in the community may access them?
Absolutely. So to begin with, just to kind of describe Crisis Intervention Services, we are the 24-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week emergency mental health response services offered out of the MHADP office through Dolphin County. We have trained mental health caseworkers that staff our office 24/7. We're licensed by the Department of Human Services and the Office of Mental Health and Substance Abuse Services in Pennsylvania to provide telephone crisis, walk-in crisis, and mobile crisis. So, we are there for individuals to call us. We're there for people to come into our office to meet with somebody. And we're also available to go into the community to do mental health assessments, offer support, and try to link individuals with services. A lot of our calls are beginning with somebody saying they need help. They call in, "I need help for myself. I need help for my child. I need help to get food. I need help for my parent." Any number of things they need help with. Our job and our role, what we see is to be able to help them get that help, whatever it may be. Our main focus is on linking people with mental health services. It could be immediate, where they may need to go to a hospital. It could be something more long-term, outpatient services, those kinds of things. Could also be getting them a meal for the night, too. So our role is to provide and answer their call for help at that time. Anybody who's in a crisis needing some help can call us. Friends call us. Family members can call us. Other members of the community, we get calls from the emergency rooms. We go in to help people who are in distress at that time. One thing that I just want to mention, we don't have doctors on staff. We're not prescribing medication. We're not doing those type of things, but we can link people with those services if they need it. There's no cost or services for any individual. We can provide help to anybody as long as they're within Dolphin County at the time. All of our services are confidential. They can be anonymous if somebody wants to call us anonymously, too. In the scope or the aftermath of a trauma or some type of stressful event, what we can do is we can be a listening ear for somebody. They can call. They can let us know what is bothering them, what kind of challenges they're having. They can talk to a caseworker and who is there to just listen. They can also call and get some ideas for maybe how to cope with things a little bit better. Some of those things that Amanda had mentioned, changes that people go through, we can be there to help them sort some of these things out. Sometimes these are situations that people have going on in their life that they have a whole bunch of other things going on in day-to-day life, and then boom, they have this traumatic stressful event, and they might need help being able to focus on what things they need to address at that time. We're there to try to help kind of provide that calming voice and help them through those things. You know, when individuals experience a traumatic event, it can happen, it can have some effects and some stress reactions that may happen immediately. It might take a couple days, it might take a couple months. We're there whenever that happens for the individual and for them to call us. Maybe they don't recognize it, but their family members do. We get people that can call us and say, "Hey, can you guys reach out to my friend or my family member who's struggling right now?" We will do that. We, like I said, we provide that supportive service. If somebody needs something more formal, they need to get access to treatment, we can help make those referrals. Like I said, that can be for some outpatient treatment if they need it. A lot of people go through a stressful event, traumatic situation, they don't need formal services. Some people do because you may have an event that is so significant that they can't manage it on their own, and there's help out there for them. Some people just need, as listening ears, some people just need time to process these things. We're there to kind of help in that short-term event and be able to help them move forward. One of the things I like to try to do is try to kind of accelerate somebody's, you know, improvement and response to some abnormal situation. Try to, you know, everybody has normal coping skills and be able to get through things. We're there to try to help them identify them and kind of key in on those to help them through something. You know, people respond differently to these things. Some people are able to have something to experience a traumatic event, move on, go to work the next day, no changes, and they never do. Other people, you know, struggle with things, and a lot of it has to do with what else is going on in their life. And again, we're there to try to help them sort that out so they can continue with their normal daily activities and be able to move forward with their life. You know, sometimes that can take days, sometimes that can take months. But, you know, the important thing is if you are experiencing something like that, don't ignore it. Reach out, try to get that help. And like I said, we're the one place, we're kind of a catch-all for a lot of people who need mental health services. A lot of people don't know how to access them, or it's, you know, it's a very cumbersome kind of network of providers and trying to get appointments and those kinds of things. We'll try to help navigate that for people because, you know, people, it's easy to get overwhelmed with that. And, you know, we're familiar with it. We're not, we can't make it necessarily an easy process. Sometimes we can help make it easier for the person. Just to kind of focus on a couple of the other things that can be accessed through crisis intervention is, and this is also in the aftermath of traumatic events, we have a, there's a Critical Incident Stress Management or SISM team that is run through the county. Matt McClurg, I think he's in our audience tonight, he coordinates and does an excellent job with providing response to first responders who've experienced a traumatic event. It could be something in the course of their work that is hard for them to deal with, move past with. Matt and his team goes in there, they meet with them usually 24 to 72 hours after. Mac and his team goes in there, they meet with them usually 24 to 72 hours after the event and provide support. These are trained peers, so if you have firefighters who experience them, these are trained firefighters who respond along with mental health support staff in order to help these individuals process what they experience, normalize it for them, you know, understand, listen to them, explain that these are normal reactions, and try to have the supportive environment to educate them and allow them to kind of vent about the experiences they had there. It's a great program that is used for first responders all throughout Dolphin County. The other thing I think that Andrew mentioned was about disaster response, and there's an emergency behavioral health team, used to be called D-CO尔 or Disaster Crisis Outreach and Referral Team, and that is coordinated through the state office of the Department of Human Services, but also it's managed by counties, too. So in Dolphin County, that's run through the crisis office. It's primarily used for when there's a community-wide event. It might be a natural disaster like Amanda described, trauma from things like that. One of the most recent ones was several years ago, there was, when the flooding happened in Harrisburg. At that time, there was a recovery center that was set up at the Harrisburg Mall where individuals could go like a one-stop shop. They could get federal assistance, they could apply for that, they can meet with people from all the different departments throughout the state and the federal government. Also, what we had there through the emergency behavioral health team was trained mental health workers. If people were upset, needed to talk to somebody, the stress of it was getting to them, they just needed a few minutes to talk to somebody. They'd go off into a corner, talk with somebody, help them process it. If further services were needed, they would hook them up with that. The role of the emergency behavioral health works is a little bit different. They're not therapists, they're not anything like that, they're not even like the crisis workers. They're there to kind of just be a supportive presence for somebody going through a tough time. Like I said, with the flooding situations like that, basically anything that can affect the community as a whole, where people are going to be congregating, then these workers will be there. A lot of the work is done to provide basic material things, give them water if they need it, help them call family members if they, you know, lost their phone. Try to help people connect and try to regain some of that normalcy in their life. But again, that's one of the other things that's kind of handled on the side through the crisis office. But again, just kind of want to be there to help people who are going through tough times and try to help provide answers and support for them.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's a question.
Absolutely.
I'm going to do my first advertisement. We're looking for employees
Yes.
from this community that are willing to serve the community. We're down staff. We're looking to develop culturally competent staff that's able to respond and to do it in a way that is motivated by all the right purposes. And quite frankly, if there are, you know, anyone out there who's listening or anyone that's in earshot, we're down a significant number of employees throughout human services for crisis intervention specifically has a large amount of concern with trying to figure out a way to keep people out. So please consider that as an option for future employment. And there's a number of ways to plug in throughout the human service system that is certainly beneficial. But just from a caller standpoint, what if I have an issue with a family member who we believe is indeed of some serious treatment, they're acting out, they may need to be, you know, evaluated at a hospital for that's a patient commitment? How would that work?
Well, it could work a couple of different ways. We process voluntary treatment options and involuntary. So if you had a family member who was willing to get the help, then we would assist with trying to coordinate having that person brought into an emergency room to be evaluated because part of the evaluation and arrangements for that kind of treatment is going to require the involvement of a physician. So usually we're going to try to get somebody, especially if safety is a concern, to an emergency room to be evaluated. If the individual is not willing to come on their own, we do have mechanisms for involuntary mental health treatment called a 302 Emergency Mental Health Commitment. Those are all processed through our office. They need to meet certain criteria by the law as far as an individual being clear and present danger to themselves as a result of a mental illness. But we will help somebody through that, let them know what their options are, and take the appropriate steps to get that individual treatment.
So last question, just to give the audience who doesn't, I think of how many people you see, sort of give us an idea of how many folks crisis saw coming through your door last year.
Last year, it was close to 5,000 that we saw coming through our doors at Crisis Intervention.
So that's pretty significant, and a lot of those were folks that we've never seen before.
Yeah, I'd say that probably close to half are individuals that have never accessed services through the county before. So those are individuals who are reaching out for the first time in need of help, and we were there to help them.
Thank you for some perspective.
Definitely.
Are there any questions in the audience? Yes? So a resource listing. Possibly an outline of what was discussed? We can work on that.
But it's also being reported. So if, you know, both contact information be provided as well as the actual reporting. So if there's any follow-up you wanted, then visual speaker here, I'm sure they'd be one to spend some time, like mainly in order to get resource information, clarification, or at least a list of discusses. And I want to make it available on our website for folks to be able to look at.
In Lancaster County? Okay, yes, we work with them, too, because we have, we sometimes we have involvement with individuals who are crossing county lines, so we've worked closely with them for years. Okay, yes.
Anyone else? Can we have any questions from those that are participating virtually? I'm not sure if there's anything in the chat. Okay.
I don't see anything in the chat.
Hi, this is Wendy Johnson. Can you hear me?
Hello, Wendy.
Hello.
Hi, how are you?
We can hear you.
Okay, great. Yes, I just wanted to say or ask the question, and I heard Commissioner Hartwick ask the question about family members in need of service. I happen to know there are individuals where the family members are not voluntarily seeking services, right? And so it leaves the family members in a very difficult place and position in trying to support the family member and get the family member help. What type of, you know, advice, information, support available out there for family members of those that do not have members that are really willing to come in or to get help?
We have NAMI of Dolphin County, which is a very active family support group. They provide family-to-family education to all residents within Dolphin County and would probably be most equipped to respond to that kind of a situation and make suggestions. I myself personally am very big on engagement. Sometimes we try to make one big change instead of baby steps, and sometimes the baby steps are hard to see. But when talking to individuals who come from the same life perspective, life experience, those baby steps become clearer. So I want to recommend NAMI of Dolphin County as a resource.
Yes, thank you.
I just want to know one thing. Wendy Johnson's also our board chair
Yes.
for Dolphin County. Program. And she's been a huge proponent of trying to get these community conversations going at the board board date with our community and to be a part of this. I'm just grateful for her time and service tonight and her participation overall, continuing to remind us to get out there and connect. Thank you, Wendy.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, we have two questions actually in the back of the room. I don't want to miss either one. That's wonderful. Sir, did you have a question?
Yes. Okay. Mentioned that it's been a few years, seven years since your team has purposes of addressing, I call it trauma, something traumatic as a race community. You know, one good example, they have been, not to heal it. It wasn't a natural disaster. It's certain trauma, you know, especially And so what's the rest? I have funeral before shooting just to see the family, just leaving, that's the family and friends, and supposedly is the target. So which made it worse. You know, those kinds of events, what, I think the team, there's more trauma going on and people are in pain and need help. And then in 2021, the American since the beginning, because they weren't properly addressed. Is there anything being done? But that's kind of like two questions.
Why don't you talk about first how we are, we take our lead from the state?
Yeah, I was going to say, I think, I mean.
Okay.
So I'll do my best to try to summarize it. Mr. Floyd Stokes, who asked the question, asked, why are we not being more active in mobilization? What would constitute a natural disaster? What you were referring to was a flood or some other level of a natural response. And he made the point that, which is very valid, as a result of the pandemic, that was certainly something that had a impact on us all in a larger way, even though it might not have happened from Mother Nature, it was certainly something that had a community-wide impact. And what does it take to trigger that kind of response mechanism? And would that not be a triggering event? He also referred to an individual who was, died recently in the shooting, and the trauma that that family experienced, and how can we do a better job of engaging the community and folks who are struggling through violence, particularly through loss, with our Crisis Intervention Team in a proactive way to address the trauma that they're experiencing?
I think the one thing I'll just mention that most of the direction we have taken, like Andrew was starting to say, is for the response of those teams was, is through the state. So it's the Department of Human Services, the Office of Mental Health and Substance Abuse, they dispatch teams throughout the state when they determine that the need arises. Now, whether that could be done more effectively at a local level and have a more appropriate response to some of these situations, it's definitely a possibility. I think that we'd have to look into that and do, you know, some investigation to see how that would happen. But I mean, point taken, yeah.
And I think what the message we want to share more broadly with any member of the community is that we will go wherever we're invited. And maybe we have to stop waiting for the invitation and be more assertive in asking for that invitation. But we are looking to do more of the kind of thing that you're talking about and do appreciate that it's important.
It's kind of like not asking because
Yes.
The computer, wow. So it's like sitting and waiting, but not knowing what the service is.
And I think that that speaks to the heart of the intent of this program, and we need those ideas and suggestions, too. So your suggestions on how we can communicate the availability of these kinds of supports would be very helpful to us.
And Floyd, not to sign you up for something else, but we have some advisory committee spots that may be available for that level of input from folks that you want to recommend or that in your role, that you may be able to provide that kind of input and feedback. That's number one. The second question that you asked was, what are we doing to engage populations that exist in this community, particularly a black and brown community, in being a part of the service delivery system as well as being employees and engaged in an effort to be able to reach out in those ways? So the first thing is, you know what that means to me. I mean, I'm constantly having this conversation with staff, human service staff. We've done a pretty good job over the last several months at trying to assist in providing the support for individual counselors in this community who are black and brown to be able to be licensed, paneled, and credentialed to provide Medicaid level of services. But I will be very clear in saying this, and some folks may say I'm in trouble. I believe there's additional barriers for black and brown folks to be able to achieve the level of licensed paneling and credentialing that prime care, that performed care and our partners at the Behavioral Health Managed Care Organization require us to have to be able to be licensed providers. It's something that we've made a priority, and we're proud to say that I think we brought five new providers online over the past year and a half that have all been successful in serving this community. And, you know, let's face it, in communities of color, there's even a bigger stigma around mental illness and the inability for folks to take something outside their own home that to not be able to reveal that to somebody from a system that could potentially use those issues against you when we're talking about a children and youth case or another criminal case. And you want to assure that the people that you're talking to have an understanding of the situations you've been through and also will hold it in high confidentiality so you don't further resist and put a wall up to being able to seek help. So all of those things are very clear in us acknowledging that, and we're making a direct and serious attempt in engaging both the business community. I'm talking to a pastor, a local pastor of a church who's helped me develop some business plans and some actual individuals who are moving forward in that direction, and we are open for business. So those individuals that you know that have an interest or a career path in the ability for us to provide that level of service, let us know. Because the minute we do, we can begin the process of doing what's necessary to build the foundation and working with them to be able to allow them to be a licensed Medicaid provider for Dolphin County's Mental Health Department.
Yes, thank you.
I could as well, but no, good, good. I mean. I think there, all of those factors are looked at when there's an initial assessment that's being done. The challenge for children and youth, there's many. But one of them is the ability to find adequate placements for those individuals who are struggling with serious mental illness that have had and found themselves, do no fault of their own, experiencing significant trauma, sexual abuse, physical abuse, and they have developed a lot of, you know, formal diagnosed issues, both from a mental health perspective and a physical health perspective, and need a higher level of care. I believe we've done a pretty good job of trying to reduce the folks in the system. I want to be clear that we're trying to keep families together, not take children away from families. That has to be very clear. The idea that we want to find ways to restore and provide support to families and not rip a child out of a home is been the clear direction. And in the case that we can't safely reunify a child with a parent, we are first looking for kin to be able to place that child with and not immediately turn into adoption or other means of placements. But one of the problems is, and we've talked about this at a state and national level, the level of individuals that need to have formal placements that have struggled, that are struggling with issues as a result of their experience in the children and youth system, we're sending kids out of state because quite frankly, there's not the level of service that can be provided or is being provided here in Pennsylvania. And other states have filed active lawsuits against the Department of Human Services and other states to demand the level of services that we need for our difficult-to-serve kids. We're having those same discussions in Pennsylvania. We need to find better solutions, and we need to find a partner in the state willing to step up and be a partner in that. need to find a partner in the state willing to, to step up and be a partner in that.
Randy, I think there might be members online that are having difficulty hearing. So I think I'm going to take a guess. I believe you said, Dr. Pinkney, that you had your hand up if you want to ask your question?
I did. I just wanted to follow up with, with Commissioner Hartwick's statement about the stigma against Black, you know, with Black and Brown people seeking service. And one of our contributions to bridging that gap is Roseanne Johnson and I are both licensed clinicians in this area. And we developed a website called Black Therapists of Central PA. And our independent research showed that in 2020, there was 47 Black therapists. And at this time, there's currently 40, well, 53. And 42 of them are on our website. So we're continuing to grow our network and it is a contribution that we're hoping to continue over this time. So I did want to offer that to the conversation. And this has been very informative tonight. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Dr. Pinkney, could you provide that information to us? Because I don't know if we have a collective list of those therapists. That would be very helpful for us to make both referrals and to make available to, at a wider level.
All right, we'll do.
Thank you.
And who was the other person? Ellen, Ellen has her hand raised?
Hello. My name is Dr. Ellen Smith, and I want to first turn this light off. Say thank you for doing this. I think this is fantastic. I have worked with Randy Jaeger in the past. I am a retired family physician and I've done a lot of training around trauma informed and ACEs and resilience and the like. And I just think this is wonderful. And I have one question. I know that in the past few years, the, there has been a Pennsylvania initiative for trauma informed, trying to, try to become Trauma Informed Pennsylvania. And I know that also in the past, there was some involvement with a group in Dauphin County. I'm not sure whether that is continuing, but I'm, I know that Randy's familiar with this. And I just wanted to check in on that and see what you guys know and if that group has been helpful for you all.
Is that microphone working?
If you want to just.
So there is a statewide trauma informed initiative. There were certain individuals across the state identified to participate. And there were some local groups taking some actions in Dauphin County. There are all, there are actually several groups around the same topic. And I think that one of the challenges, at least from my perspective, is that each group has their own niche, so to speak, in terms of what they were doing. And I appreciate Jim Thompson being here this evening. He's been a part of communities practicing resiliency. And Dr. Ellen, you were a huge part of starting that group with several members, including Claude Phipps, who's also online tonight. There's also another group in Uptown Harrisburg doing some trauma informed work. But I, lately I have not heard anything. It's probably been about six months. So I think different groups are doing different things at their own pace. And I'm not sure that it's a county wide collective, if you will. In terms of the state, I have not seen anything but that initial report in terms of the state trauma initiative.
Could you touch on what we're doing internally with employees to ensure that we're providing the level of trauma informed care, at least from Dauphin County's employment perspective?
Yeah. So actually, Dr. Ellen Smith has been an integral part of training all of our new employees and existing employees to ensure that they understand the level of trauma that our customers may have experienced. And everybody has a different story and everybody needs to tell it in their own way. And I think it's our job to listen to whatever our customers are willing to share with us. And to your point, Andrea, those tiny steps are really critical. And we need to be very conscientious about not re-traumatizing anyone we're serving. You know, we need to make sure that our language and how we approach folks and quite frankly, what our facial expressions are, right? How we engage with folks matters. And part of that big part is just listening without judgment. So all of our staff go through that. And that, quite frankly, does remind me that we should be scheduling another one.
Yes.
Are you going to require that I sing?
But, but Andy might.
I wanted to add, I want to add, in addition to being part of the communities practicing resiliency, I also am a longtime Harrisburg School Board Director. And part of my involvement in the trauma informed response that CPR is becoming known for, what I find is that the school district has a, a special responsibility in the community for being a kind of a, in their own way, a first responder to the kids that come in that we serve. So as part of the state response, now all 5,000 school directors in the state are required to take a mandatory professional development in the effects of trauma on our kids. So as a school district, then we bring trainers in to sensitize our faculty and staff to the effects of trauma on our kids and on the lives of their families. And as you might imagine, it's a lot of the things that our kids experience at home. It's all top secret is when they come to school, it's like, don't tell anybody that this is going on at home. So it's, you know, in many ways, it's, I'm sure that it's extremely difficult for you as responders at the county level to sort of get behind the eyes of these children and figure out what exactly is going on in the community and how can we respond. But from my perspective, I've been on the school board now since 2012. I've seen a lot along the way. It's taken me a long time to kind of figure out what's going on. It's like you have to be there for a while to kind of figure out what's going on in the community. And I do think that we're becoming increasingly sensitized to the effects of trauma on our kids and how to deal with them in a more sensitive way. So I, to that extent, I think what's happening in our community is good.
Commissioner, can I add a resource quickly? I'm sorry.
Please.
I, I wanted to point out, and although it's not in Dauphin County, it's just across the river, there's a place called the Highmark Carrying Place. And they do a lot of grief therapy for families, but they have a lot of online resources such as books you can use to discuss grief with children, articles for family members. And I can put their information in the chat. That would be helpful. Absolutely.
Very helpful.
Yep, thank you.
And I, I, one question, I mean, we talked about some of the traumatic events of 4th of July as one of the precipitating reasons why we had this conversation. And, you know, those who experienced and had this backdrop of, you know, national shootings that have happened, and then you get to a crowded event and something like that happens and the trauma that somebody experienced. So if somebody's watching tonight that has experienced that and doesn't know how to process through that or is struggling with those kind of issues, what, what advice would we try to give them?
You know, that's a really great question. And I think that, you know, COVID has definitely had an impact. We see much more mental health than we've been seeing more recently. And I think that people in general are more in tune to the news. And we worry about, you know, a lot more than we used to before the pandemic. But I think the best thing that you can do is know yourself and know some of these reactions are natural reactions when we hear these things and see these things. But if they linger and you just aren't feeling yourself, I think Dave said it too, is like, just go talk to someone and find out what resources are best for you. And, and nobody gets to tell you what's traumatic to you and what's not. I think that's something that we hear is, you know, so and so told me that this isn't a big deal. But trauma is how you perceive. The reality is, nobody can take that away from you. And to, you know, validate those feelings. I think that's very important.
So Amanda, since you said that could, is there sort of a one or two page listing of resources of if I've experienced trauma, how can I refer to, I know we have these books that say where to turn for help. And they give us a comprehensive listing of where, where we go. But if we were thinking about trauma, sort of.
We have, we have those at the front of the room, but I'm wondering if we can append it to the, the video recording as well.
I think that would be great because there are people that specialize in trauma. Not everyone who's a therapist necessarily treats trauma. So you want to make sure you're getting connected to the right folks. And there's different types of trauma. I'm sorry, I was just going to say there's different types of trauma therapy for children versus adults as well. So you want to make sure you're getting connected to best suits your needs.
We will also include the contact information for crisis intervention, our case management unit and our own office. So between all of those resources, someone can find what they need. Are there other questions? No, okay.
It's just Stokes.
Yes, sir.
Want to come on up? Okay. I, I forgot you have, you have a bad wheel.
So, January 6th, last year, I was, I called Zoom, broke friends and family. One call about this. Come on, Zoom. Maybe 40, 50 people, one, who traumatized this. I talked to some friends who experienced the July 4th. I wasn't there. A lot of them said, I'm never going down to the first one again. As a matter of fact, I had gathered further down the river. And they were like, is this a burp? I said, yes, not. They were really traumatized. I, I think the group is missing opportunities to activate and have something that people can come to the process of.
But, and, and maybe we need to have this community dialogue on the heels of an event like that. Or proactively, we can develop a schedule to get out there. But you can't, you know, after something happens, I think maybe, maybe making an accessible counselors and professionals and the ability to do a Zoom in, in a response to something like that within a 24 to 48 hour time period may be an appropriate suggestion. And with those tools, we may be able to reach more people. But we're, we're open to suggestions. And, and as part of that, you know, I said in the beginning, we were looking to have, this is being the first of a series of conversations that we talk about. I know next month is National Suicide Prevention Month. And we, we were going to talk a little bit about suicide, which suicides post pandemic are way up as well. We were going to have that for the next month's topic. But ultimately, we would like to hear from you who are participating. I mean, if you'd like to drop a note in the, in the chat, if you wanted to send me an email, if you want to send any of us correspondence about ideas of, of resources you'd like to get a little bit more deeper with, find out a little bit more about, or topics that we can bring in some experts around and provide a level of support and dialogue and education. I think we want this really to be understood, because if we're going to continue to do it, we're going to have to try to, you know, sort of get people engaged and involved. The community takes ownership. This becomes a partnership where, you know, we're, we're not dictating, but we're listening and we're trying to facilitate. And that, that's where I'd rather be than trying to figure out a way that for us to put on these future events. So if you have any ideas, I know Wendy Johnson has several ideas. I know that there's also been some dialogue about a couple of other ideas. We are open to suggestions. And if we put this on every month or every other month, how, how are we able to put a, sort of a lineup of events that are going to be worthwhile? Everybody's time's valuable. Being able to do things that are going to both engage, inform, educate and inspire you to be more, more involved and take ownership.
Okay. I thank you all for coming tonight. I thank you for your ideas, your questions and your suggestions. And I thank all of the panel members, the speakers. Thank you for your time. Have a good evening.
Thank you all for your time.